Reverend Don Miller is here. He's going to give an invocation before we begin. Go ahead, Don.
Thank you, dear. It's an honor to come and pray for this meeting today. Let's pray. Before I do give my prayer, this month was National Day of Prayer, and the coordinators of National Day of Prayer have written a prayer that I'm going to use today to begin my prayer. I think it's really a good prayer that I can share with you today. Lord, we look up and see the millions of stars you created, and we praise you. We look around and see the billions of people you created in your image, uniquely, fearfully, wonderfully, and we thank you. Wrap us in your spirit and unite us in our family, oh Lord. Thank you for loving us first. In your love for the whole world, you sent your son to save us. Jesus, in you alone, we have abundant and everlasting life. Thank you for teaching and leading us to love and to live fruitful and faithful lives. In your life, your death, your resurrection, and your ascension, you are our Lord, our love, and our life, and our liberty. You came to bind up the brokenhearted and proclaim liberty to the captives and freedom to prisoners. You have freed us from the penalty and shame of our sin, free to live life as you did design and your destiny for our nation. Would you pray with me? Father, pray for this meeting just now. We're thankful, Father, for being able to live in a country where people can come, talk to the representatives of government, and come up with decisions that all can live with in peace and security. Father, be with this meeting. We just pray, Father, for all that's said and done that may be in your glory and be done in truth and wisdom. We pray, Father, for guidance in our life each and every day. And, Father, we look around in May, and we realize that flowers are blooming, and gardens are coming, and farmers are plowing the fields. And we just pray, Father, you'll bless all those endeavors. We pray, Father, for a good harvest in the fall. Just be with each one, and may beauty and reverence come from all their efforts. Father, we love you. We thank you for your son, Jesus, and what he did for us on the cross, providing for us an opportunity of eternal life, but also, Father, a joyful and abundant life each and every day here on this earth. These things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Don. We'll call this May 18th meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order. Please join us from the front.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands as its own, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First thing, be our minutes from our previous meeting. You guys had a chance to look those over?
I'm going to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Okay. We have a motion by Mark Second, but they want to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. All the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Realize. Okay. First thing on our agenda today is to hear a public hearing, a petition from Mr. Keith, okay, to close or vacate an alley in Everton. So we will officially declare this public hearing open. And, Mr. Keith, do you have representation?
Yes.
Okay. Would you like to address the board?
Yes, I would briefly, yes, Commissioner. My name's Pat Medel, and I represent Farrell and Nancy Keith in their petition that's here before you commissioners. I'm going to give you a diagram which will probably victorally do a much better job than I can do verbally.
Thank you.
Nancy and Farrell Keith purchased lot number 10 on your diagram back in November of 1988. So they've been there 34 years. When they purchased the property, there was in existence this 10-foot alley that sits just to the south of them, in between lot 9 and lot 10. Over the years, the alley had deteriorated, really for lack of use, and as it sits today and as it sat for a long time, many years, there is gravel between the street and about 50 feet in from the street, heading west. And that gravel is gravel that Mr. Keith has put there and continues to put there because he pulls his car in there and stops it by the house, and it kept him from tracking mud in and out of the house. So the gravel that's there has been put there over the years by Mr. Keith. From about 50 feet up from the street, all the way to the 10-foot alley that sits at the back of the property, it's just grass. It's been mowed by Mr. Keith for 30 years, plus years, and because it's been mowed and maintained that way, if you were standing there, you couldn't even tell that there ever been an alley. It's just nice, smooth lawn. This has been that way again since 1988. Mr. Keith is here and would like to ask the court to go ahead and vacate the alley because it really doesn't get used, and the gravel that's there, he puts there, which kind of just up to his house so he can park his car, and maintains the back part of what was originally an alley by mowing it and maintaining it. The other issue that really comes about with this alley is that his gas main sits within about two feet of that alley, just off the side of his house. So probably is dangerously close to what would normally be a public right-of-way alley because somebody could easily hit that gas main. The property owners for lot 9, the other side of the property, are here, and my clients understand, and I believe they do, that should the commissioners, in their wisdom, see fit to vacate that alley, half of that alley would go to lot 9 and half of it would go to lot 10. We don't believe that it inconveniences anyone, as the general public doesn't use it as an alley. There are some people in lot 11, and they have the same access to their lot by going on North Street and coming in the 10-foot alley behind their lot. And as I understand it, they have, on an infrequent basis, come through there just because, not because they were using it and it was necessary, because they have the same access, being in the middle of the alley and North Street, the same access from North Street that they would from that 10-foot alley. So we're here asking the court, the commissioners, to vacate that alley because it's been maintained for 30 years by my client, Farrell's, the Keiths, I'm sorry. Farrell, is there anything you'd like to say?
I need to get up there and say it.
Yeah, get up there and say it.
Yeah, like you said, we've lived there since 1988. And, of course, when we bought the place, I really didn't pay no attention to it. I didn't think about it being that. I always thought it was a utility easement because there is a gas line runs down through there, telephone poles, electric, and all that. So, you know, it can't be closed. It's just what they call vacate or whatever. That's what we'd like to do, just the utilities can get there. But to me, it's a safety issue too because if we go to step out of our driveway or off the back, because it's so close to the alley, within two feet or so, we have to look both ways, like you're crossing State Road 1 or something, you know? And it's, I mean, we're not doing it out of spite or anything like that. We just think, I think it's a big safety issue. My wife has already, almost got hit one time years ago when she stepped off our back porch because of a car, that truck coming through there. I think it was a truck or something. But, and it's been a, there was an issue here several months ago, so I'm not sure. I know why it became an issue then, but that's neither here nor there. But it is a big safety issue, and really, nobody ever uses it. I use it to getting a lawnmower from the front to the back, or if I go back to my garage. And it don't take you to anything. And 270 gets you to 550 and all the way around. There's two other ways to go to State Road 1, so why do you need to drive through there over the rest? I have no idea. And the only thing back there in that alley, right there, close, is my garage. So, you know? But it doesn't deny anybody access to a property because Greg and Christie is on one side, we're on the other side, and then on down, that's John Pavy, and then the...
The Everton Community then?
Was Lions Club. And I've talked to everybody. Nobody has a problem with it, except for lot 11. And that's pretty much what I got to say. Any questions for me? I talked to you once, Mr. Strong.
Yeah, we talked over the phone.
Yeah.
That's been quite a while back.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Keith, does this alley continue to run clear over to State Road 1?
Yes.
Okay. So...
I maintain the park from the back alley to 270 East.
Okay. So what you're asking is to close only the section of the alley that is the same length as your building lot?
Well, that would be fine, but Pat said I'd have to close, we'd have to close the whole thing.
Okay, the entire alley?
Because I talked to John Pavy personally. He don't have a problem with it being taken down to that. And then I talked to Ray on the, was Lions Club, then that's the Everton Community, and he talked to everybody on board that takes care of that and everything, and they didn't have a problem with it. So they were just going to vacate it all the way to State Road 1. I think that's what Pat asked for on the petition anyway.
Okay.
Even though I don't do anything with that, I think the Lions Club mows that, or the Everton Community, whoever it is now, mows it. That's never been used hardly at all.
That's all I have right now.
Okay. So that section here, that's grass also?
Right.
This here, I guess going up to 1?
Yeah, that's all grass.
All the way?
From the edge of my house, about 60 feet back, all the way back, that's all grass that gets mowed. It's been mowed for about 37 years.
And the Everton Lions Club is out in this section that I might think of, right?
Lions Club is on the north side of it there, and then John Pavy owns the other side of it.
Okay, that's the gravel lot. Pavy would be the gravel lot here.
Yeah, he's got the gravel lot where the house...
And that's the Lions Club.
Where the appliance store used to be, Lake Client Store.
Okay.
And, yeah, all this corner, because there was this alley that goes to here, and then that's Pavy, and then that's the, what?
The Lions Club.
Everton Community.
Yeah.
And that's grass all the way out to State Road 1. Yeah.
And then lot 9 is your...
Lot 6.
Okay. Nine. Okay, Jane's got it up on the GIS. Okay, Jane's got it up on the GIS.
I didn't do it on that one. You'll have to look it up.
Oh, okay.
I think this is where the Lions Club is.
The community building.
Yeah.
Bet you can see it don't deny access to anybody to the property in back because there's an alley back there that runs north and south. And then the four of us that the property adjoins the alley, none of us have a problem with vacating.
All right, I get it. Okay. Okay, well, right now, I didn't have anything. Any more questions for you, you guys?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions or comments about Mr. Keith's petition? Okay, please come up and give your name and address for the record, please.
Mrs. Graham, and I guess on lot 11 they're talking about...
Just to verify, this is the alley question. That's the lot that just the petitioners, is that you?
Yes. And I'm not the only one in question of closing this or abating this alley. I brought two letters from other residents that own the ones there. One's been there 25 years. The other one no longer lives there, but this house does belong to her son. And they wrote letters. I can either pass them around or you can read them. The alley has not been abandoned. It's been blocked. I've been there almost 19 years, and he's been parking there. We have utilized the alley when there's nothing sitting there. But most of the time, as he's told you, he's parked there, so you really can't utilize as far as a vehicle or bicycles for the kids. That's the one reason we would like to see the alley stay open. It makes a safer place for the kids to ride the bikes on the half alley, which is the north and south alley, which connects to the alley, which keeps the children off of State Road 1 and Everton Road. And if you've ever been out to Everton Road, in three months, three seasons out of four, that is a very busy intersection that connects there, the light that pays, the flashing light. Three seasons out of four, we are super busy on State Road 1 and Everton Road because of their path to the lake. So, I mean, it's a super busy. So if you abate the alley, that is putting the kids onto Everton Road in the three seasons that they would be on bicycles or out walking or moving around. And that's why we're against it. It's not because we have an issue with Farrell and Nancy, but the only person that benefits from closing that alley is them. I have six children. I just had my first two grandchildren. That house has been in my family before I was born. I mean, somebody in the family's going to own it. The lady that, one of the ladies that wrote a letter, she has three children and nine grandchildren and would like to utilize that alley. She didn't even know it was an alley because he's always parked there. So if you would like, and I brought some pictures to show, if you would like to pass them around, and the two letters that is from...
If you're wanting them to be seen by the commissioners, I mean, they're essentially part of the record, so they'll have to be, they'll have to be shown and be kept.
Do I need to read them? Okay, that's fine. I mean, if you need to keep them or show them, that's fine. Because I'm not the only one. I mean, the two other, and then there was a neighbor that would like to see the alley open, but she said she would not enter into the drama that it would cause, standing up against it being closed, so she would not come.
And just for clarification purposes, I've got names and addresses. Do you have lot numbers for these folks? Are they on this diagram?
Debbie Legier, this one is from Debbie Legier, and I don't think she's on here because she lives directly right here. She's like in between across from Farrell's and I. And the other one would be Lisa Roberts and her son, and her owned the house on the corner.
And just for clarification, just because of some statements you made, you do realize they're advocating for this alley, right?
Yes.
Okay, because you may mention the north, south. That alley essentially would not be impacted, right?
Right. But see, the kids have a safer route to ride this way versus coming all the way down here and being on 1. You've got Everton Road right here, which is...
But if they go like this, then they go right out the right way.
Right. But they're still going to be out here on Everton Road, which is very busy, three seasons out of four, because of the boat ramp and Egypt Olive. It's not a personal thing. It's trying to do what's right. I mean...
I would advise...
And that's what bothers me.
You might want to describe what those photos are, and then while everybody will see.
I took some Google photos, which shows you the alley that runs the east and west, which is the one they want to close, and you can see where it interclines with the north and south alley. And there are Google shots of them. And then there is shots of Mr. Farrell's vehicles parked after they made him move his car from the alley. And then there is one that shows 270 East and shows him parked in the alley. And then some that shows his just photo parked in the alley. And then some more Google map ones that show from above. And if they need to be kept or entered, that's fine. I have other copies. I mean, we're not asking for a lot. We're asking for the chance to utilize this alley because we are going to be long-term residents in the community. And I also did talk to Mr. Pavy, and he said he didn't care one way or the other. He really didn't have a comment either way. He said, "To be honest with me," when he opened the letter and seen what it was, he threw it in the trash. And we're not asking for a lot. We're just asking for the opportunity to utilize an alley that we should have had the opportunity to utilize all these years. Because it is a much safer safe way for the children than to be on Everton Road or State Road 1. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Graham. We'll read these letters from your neighbors and look at the photos, too. I guess that is the alley right there. Right, yeah. Runs on, straight on out to the road there. And back here somewhere, it would have to tee around north and south, probably close to that utility pole.
It's right next to that phone pole and the gas line pole.
Is electric and gas the only two utilities that's there in that?
Nope, water.
Water also?
Down the back alley.
Okay.
Yeah. See, the alley is...
It's grass as well.
Right there, on this corner, is a telephone pole right there with a security light, and there's a gas line right, almost right against it. And there's telephone poles up through here, there's a gas line running through here, and the electric and cable and all that runs to there. And water and gas and everything runs to the back alley. That's the one that runs north and south, this one here. And then that goes all the way out to State Road 1. And this is, this used to be on grass. Now it's got a basketball court there for the kids to play in. And this is, used to be the Lions Club. We're here.
Okay, on this picture, is this the, is this alley here? Is that this alley? Or am I looking at this back, except, except like that, all right? Yeah, State Road 1 would be out here.
Yeah, it'd be out here somewhere.
Is it north-south alley? Is it paved?
Excuse me?
Is the alley that runs north-south, is it paved?
No.
Who maintains that backyard?
Nobody.
Is it gravel?
No.
Barely. Rudded.
It's got landscaping, so...
I had, when Dave Flum was commissioner, they put gravel on it one time about 20, 25 years ago.
And that north-south alley, the western portion of the alley we're in question about, is that, who maintains that property?
Excuse me?
So who maintains this portion? The western half of that, of the alley we're talking about? Who maintains this?
Pavy owns this, and then it's not the Lions Club, but whoever the Lions Club people was, due to the community building, they mow it.
What's, they mow, okay. So the property, the northern, they mow this?
Uh-huh.
On this picture, will you show me where this is?
Yeah.
If it's on this picture.
Back there. Sure. But the, some of the stuff, they're the, picture, you can see my gas thing right there.
Well, if you want us to, I hate to interrupt, but if you want us to interpret anything from those pictures, you have to admit it's essentially there, which is fine. We just want people to picture.
And then, and this right here to the alley.
And that's the boundary from my driveway. It's 30 inches from my driveway. I open my truck door, and you're in the alley.
You might explain that. They're the decision makers. I just can't tell them what's legal and what's not legal.
Okay.
So if you line these up, that's where it's going to be. So this is the west alley. I'm assuming this is the north and south alley, or am I got that backwards?
Yeah, this is north. So this alley here is this one right here?
Yes, and this is just the one.
That one.
Oh, that must be off Google. Hard to make it out.
And that's the old bank, and that's Pavy's lot.
Yes, that's where the, used to have a big house that we go down. Yeah, Mr. Pavy owns that, too. And this house here is Mr. Pavy's. And here is where he was talking about. There's now a basketball. They just put a basketball court.
Yeah, they put a basketball court up there.
For his rental pool. He plays softball. Then we're just where I could try to see.
And then that's the alley right there.
Yes.
And you said the utilities run both east and west and north and south?
Yeah, there's utilities in both. The one north and south, now that's got, it's got water also, which the east-west does not, not that I'm aware of. It's got gas down the center of it, then the electric poles and everything right beside the alley on the edge there.
This is actually in front of our road here. This is the 270.
Yeah, see, there's one of them. There's the telephone poles there down alongside the alley. And my markers are not in there. Because I had it all surveyed. There's my states where it's all surveyed, and see how close it is to the telephone pole there, and how close it is to my gas main.
And that may be so, but in all the years my dad's been in my house since I was born, there's never been a fatality or anything in that alley.
No, there hasn't. There hasn't.
For there to be even questionable. I don't think the chances of it being used for the small alley that it is, if we have anything to worry about where that's questioned.
Well, these picture here is what we question all the time, and that's why we worry. That's my driveway, and that's them driving across my driveway every week. Just like the back, back there by my garage. They'll drive right through my property. Because you know you can't make the turn back there at 10-foot wide into a 10-foot alley. Cannot make that turn.
Should have put the road, yeah.
It's not on the alley.
Hey, guys, hey, hey, it's kind of gotten...
No, I didn't build that house.
It's gotten a little bit informal. I'm going to bring us back to formality, if that's okay with the commissioners. So let's have one person speak, and we can come to the podium if we need to speak, okay?
Yeah, thank you.
If this was to be vacated, what would that do to the utility easements? Would it do anything to it?
No, the easements are attached to the property. I mean, yeah, I'd like the easements continued. I think that by operation of law, the vacated alley would be divided to the adjacent property owners right now. By operation of law, it would... By operation of law, it would essentially impact their property. Would you agree with that, Commissioner?
What's that?
You would agree by operation of law that this would essentially, both sides of this alley, half of it would be, go to each adjacent property owner, correct?
Yes, but it has to stay open because utilities have to be able to get in there to work on their stuff.
Sure, but it would just no longer be a public right.
Right, correct.
The public could not, you could, you could essentially break it off and allow for utilities.
I mean, it's very seldom been used by the public anyway. Yes, I've parked in it some, but not all the time.
And just for formality's sake, we've probably already passed this bridge, but I, I do want to say that the statute requires that the petition state the circumstances of the case, which I think it does. Specifically describe the property proposed to be vacated, which I think it sufficiently does. And third, it shall give the names and addresses of all owners of land that abuts the property proposed to be vacated, which I believe it does. So as far as, um, proper procedure in regards to the petition, I believe it's all there now. It's just your decision on whether or not you want to do it or not.
Well, did you have anything else?
No, just, you wanna keep them pictures, you wanna...
These belong to you. We don't want to get them mixed up with the...
Have you, have you looked at those pictures? If you look at those pictures, they belong to the record.
Yes, I did, we did look at two of them. Okay, we'll have to keep those for the record then.
Okay.
All right. Okay.
So you done with me, or?
I guess so. We'll give anyone else an opportunity that wants to speak. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir. Come up and stick your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Patrick James, Senior. I reside at three twenty-four Water Street, Carrville, Indiana. I've been a minister for over forty years, and I'm Vietnam veteran dying of Agent Orange. And I'm not here to lie for anybody. But this attorney has not been discreet with you. That man has not been discreet with you. And the Everton Fire Department has not been discreet with you. They made them fire lanes. And they run us out of that alleys and said, "You cannot park in the fire lanes." Now, I was there first. I started by your house. But I said no, because they told me it was a fire lane, and it will always be a fire lane. And the Everton Fire Department knows that. You all do know that. God's my witness. You're gonna set him lying if you say that.
Excuse me, sir. I want you to speak as loud as you want to, I want you to speak on every subject you want to. But we are gonna expect civility, okay?
I didn't know that it was gonna be this big. If it was, we should have the right to an attorney also.
I agree.
So if this thing is gonna get bigger, give us a chance to get an attorney, and we'll bring a whole bunch of witnesses in here to get to the truth. This guy and his neighbor put logs out there, they put cars out there, they blocked the alley. I called the state police, and the state police, it's gotta be on record. And they still done. And they're still doing it. Well, now since the county made the move. They're not being honest with you.
When was the logs put out?
The, your neighbor over there, the one, forgive me, they call her the evil one, their property. They owned a whole hundred, a hundred, probably a hundred feet by a hundred feet of open lot. And they wanna block all this fire lane? They ain't got nothing in that lot, but they wouldn't block it off? That don't make, that don't even make good ignorance. Now, this guy built in the alleyway on his house. In the alleyway. He knows an alleyway. He got plenty of room to build in the back of his house. No, he didn't do that. He wanted to build it towards the alley. He had a two-car garage. He didn't want that, so he changed it into a living room. He still got two spaces to park out front. Not only that, ten to fifteen feet in front of his house is city parking that he don't allow the right to park on. And Everton Fire Department, not gonna fool me, I was the volunteer fire department for a lot of you guys. So you're not fooling me. I was close to the house, I bought the first house. I turned this down because it was always going to be a fire lane. That's what they told me. Jim Lates and the Fire Department, they made it clear they would run you out of the alley. Now, you people are not being honest. I don't care how many faces you make, you're not being honest. And you know, God's my witness, you're telling stories. Now, you people can believe me, or we could get, they give us time, we get a turning, we'll get deeper and deeper and deeper in this. I'll even subpoena people if I have to. If you wanna get down to what's going on here, it's already in the wind, and that's hearsay, so they don't care. All they're trying to do is get that property, just like they, they tried to force out there at Whitey's old place. They tried to build an apartment complex, and you know what would've happened? All the drunks and everybody would've come into the complex. Now they're, they've, they've already put the wind that they're, they're moving. And I don't blame them. If I had Jim Lates' old warehouse, I'd move, too. But they're not being honest with me. If we're gonna have to get in it deeper, this, and I want the right for us to get an attorney and bring more people in here. Now, that's not asking a whole lot, is it? We'll get down to the honesty of these honest people. You take your head all you want, you know you're lying, but...
I'm sorry, Director, please. Director comments to the board, it doesn't matter what they're doing out there. They don't get to make decisions. Those three gentlemen right there are the only ones that do, so Director comments to the board.
I've just seen the dirty nonsense going on out there. And I was out there for most of it. I turned the house over to my daughter. This guy, these people, my first son-in-law drove a tractor, eighteen-wheeler. He would come home and park in the alley where they was parked. And they'd park behind him so he couldn't get his tractor out. Now, that's an honest citizen, isn't it? They fought and argued and cussed and carried on, and I can bring them all in here and tell you, make it witness. Family after family after family. And Jim Lates and the Fire Department said that it, those were fire lanes, and they always will be. And they run us out of it if we parked in them. And here's even something crazier. Now, suppose you give this land to these people, and Everton grows down, grows to be big, and then they need water hydrants on the street. Well, they gonna buy the property back from the people? They already got a place for fire hydrants and water lines. Well, I take it, and don't let them tell you that they're the only one that ever mowed that property. That is the truth. Now, you can take their word for it, but I'm not taking it. I know better. I was there from the beginning. And I have, that's the reason I turned that property down. They made it clear there will always be a fire lane there. And while this person lives two hundred feet over, and got the big lot between them, well, they don't care if it's a fire lane or not. They're the ones causing all the trouble. And they ain't got a thing to do with their property. Now, come on. Now, if this is gonna go farther, then I want the right for us to be able to get an attorney.
Mr. James, on this, this plaque map, could you point out where, where your property is on this map?
Well, it's, it's, uh, it's the one right behind the bank out, well, it used to be bank out of Everton.
Right behind the bank. This is the Keiths, this is the Grahams?
That's, that's my daughter, Brittany.
Oh, okay.
Misty is my daughter.
Oh, okay.
I just wanna give her the house.
All right.
Now, here's the crazy part. The alley here, right? This guy had a two-car garage. And then he could've still parked two cars in the garage, and then two, he could've parked two more cars out in the driveway. And he's got the front of his yard, it goes out the street, which you could park there if he didn't take it. And then he decided to build on it. He decided to close his garage off and make it a room or something. But he wouldn't build on the back. So then, then after he done that, he decided, well, I would've put my door over here. Why didn't he put it in the back?
So you're talking about this lot right here?
Yeah. There was no reason for this man to build an entrance on that fire lane. Other than the scam that's in the wind, I can only say this is hearsay, right? That they're trying to get as much money as they can to build up the property so they can sell it down the road. This is a scam. Now, here's the even crazier part. He builds a three-car garage back here, never uses it, built it full of junk. And then, he built it right close to the crosses of the alley. He just told you how hard it was getting out there? Well, why would a guy build a three-car garage right on the crossroads of a fire lane? It doesn't make good ignorance.
Okay, well, all right, all right.
And I, if this, if this is what, I would like to be able to hire an attorney, if that, I could bring a lot more witnesses in here. That has argued with them people, and argued with them people, and argued with them people. That's why some of the witnesses ain't here, they don't, they don't even wanna talk to them. They don't even wanna talk to these people. They call her the evil one. Now, God's my witness, I'm telling you the truth. And you Everton Fire Department, you know it. Now, this is where, you know you're lying. Uh, forgive me.
Okay.
Sounds like we're in a Biden conflict here.
Okay. Was, was there anything else that pertains only to the facts of the matter, Mr. James?
Well... If I'm trying to think, I'm gonna do it. That's why I wanna get an attorney, there's plenty of things to think about. We get it down on paper. We get right back to this, and get right down to the rotten incident.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, well, we'll...
If I'm lying to you, then let the Lord take me out. That's how I feel about it.
Okay. Well, i- if, if that's all you had to say, we'll give anyone else an opportunity.
No, I got more to say if we get an attorney.
Okay.
This, this guy, legal counsel comes in here. We wasn't expecting to find a lawyer. We thought this was just a council meeting. So we got a right to get an attorney and find an attorney with the facts. And all the witnesses, not, they've been fighting and arguing with for years, and how they blocked off the alley till nobody could use it. It wasn't, it wasn't there not being used. They stopped people from using it. They delivered, they stopped me from using it. They stopped my kids from using it. Anybody come, they even got somebody, they didn't want the kids to walk through there. Now, that's low. They're blowing smoke to you guys. I don't speak very often, but when I speak, I got something to say. Now, if they're gonna continue this, I wanna get an attorney. That's unfair.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, is there anyone else in attendance that would like to speak to the matter? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Greg Roach, forty-nine seventy-five South County Road two seventy east, aisle lots eight and nine. So I'm the south property of that alley.
Keith's the big lot.
I got the big lot that everybody says I'm the problem, but that's fine. As for the Fire Department, I'm also Assistant Chief on Everton Volunteer Fire Department, okay? And that would not be used as a fire lane with overhead power lines. That would be stupid. To park a fire truck into that with overhead power lines.
I think this is an important discussion. So this would not impact the Volunteer Fire Department whatsoever?
No.
Do, and the fire trucks do never go up and down the alley?
For one, if it's, it's not gravel, it's not compacted, if it's wet, you pull in there, they're gonna get stuck. Two, on top of that, you have overhead power lines running there. You're not gonna park your fire truck up under overhead power lines. Am I right, or am I wrong?
You're right.
So for that to ever be, I've, I've got an abstract, my house is eighteen sixty. In my abstract, nowhere does it state that that was a fire lane at any time. So I, I have an empty lot there that butts up to that alley.
Lot nine is empty?
Yeah.
Is your residence that on lot ten, or?
It's on lot eight.
Or lot eight?
Yes. I have a privacy fence that runs up through here, I've just kept it empty. Just, wouldn't need for anything to be on there.
He said, just for the record, he was pointing between lots eight and nine. Lot eight, you can't see, but it's directly south of lot nine, and the hash, the dash, that's a fence, a privacy fence?
Yeah, I got a privacy fence that runs basically up through here, through part of lot nine. But the empty lot's mine. As for some of the stuff being said, kids playing in the alley, kids don't play, play in that alley. You know what the reason why they don't play in that alley? Because lot eleven flies up and down the alley. And I can get you video if you wanna see videos. That's what started all this from the get-go. They drove through my lot, all the way up my lot, and never veered back onto the alley. That's what started all this, right? Is they don't have respect for other people's property. They walk through our property all the time. They don't anymore, 'cause I do have it posted, and I will file charges, and they've been told that. Other than that, you guys got any questions for me?
I can't think of anything right now. Do you, you guys have any questions for Mr. Roach? Okay, is, is there a...
One question. This is not you, right? This is...
That's me.
Oh, that's you?
That's me.
Okay, where's your privacy fence? Where would it be? Is that?
No, it's back here.
Back here?
Yeah, it's back here.
It's in another one of those pictures there, Dale, if you...
Okay, that.
Yep, that's me.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, there it is, okay.
Yep. So I, I actually... I own all the way over past the house, maybe about twenty or so feet over, you know, property line goes. Basically, I own from that street to the alley to the south, and over is the property line over. All right? Thanks, thanks.
Is there anyone else present that would like to speak? Mr. James, it's first see if there's anyone else in the group that wants to speak that hasn't had an opportunity. Anyone else?
No, I wanna say something. My name is Nancy Key, and I'm, uh, case five. I've always been really concerned about the alley, because the time that I had walked out on my back patio, if we hadn't had the gravel, where we had placed the gravel on our drive, on the alley, and I heard the vehicle coming, I would've got ran over when I stepped off of my patio. It's only like three feet, and I happened to hear the gravel, and I stopped. If it wasn't for that, I would've got ran over. Gets that close to our home.
Do you know how much...
And that isn't the only time this has happened. It's happened here recently, too.
I don't know what the setbacks are.
Well, our property has been surveyed, and if you would like to come out and see the survey stakes, they are in proper place.
Okay. So your, your house is within the setback, uh, regulation?
Judging by, judging by the former gentleman's talking about his residence being built in eighteen-something, my gut tells me that this house was probably built before we had a planning permission.
This house was built in nineteen seventy-three?
Oh, maybe?
Seventy-three.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe not. Setbacks have certainly changed since then.
Yeah, I can't... Yeah, I can't remember what year those lots were platted down there. Uh, it's, it's been within my lifetime.
On my abstract.
Beg your pardon?
They're plotted out on my abstract.
Okay, yeah, I can't remember what year those lots were platted.
But then still, when it was in Franklin County. Everything, everything was part of Franklin County, it was planted.
Okay. And it's further, further north, the, the later, the later plotting was done, right, Bill?
Yeah, uh-huh, that old part. Probably was Franklin County, that may, may or may not be part of it.
Okay. Well, setbacks and things were different back then.
Yeah, there's a lot in town, there's a lot of homes built on property lines, there are just a lot of property lines. Back then, it didn't really mean a lot, I mean, three feet was probably a severe D setback in, you know, those days. Early 90s is when a lot of major setbacks came in.
Okay. Did you have anything else, Mrs. Keith?
Yeah, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else would like to speak to the matter?
I just got one question for you.
Okay, Mr. James?
Why was these people allowed to block the alley?
Because I almost got ran over, that's why.
What was you doing down there?
Okay, is there any more questions or comments before we close the public participation of the process here? Mr. James, again.
I used to try to park in the alley behind my house, right? Misty lives, right behind the bank. Poor, mighty favorite old guy, he used to chuck it up. They would come and run you out of the alley. Now, suppose you give this alley to them, do we get the alley behind our house? It's only fair. It's the same thing.
You, you would, you would have to, you would have to petition to close that alley, Mr. James, just, just like Mr. Keith has. You would have to petition to close that part of the alley, just like Mr. Keith has.
But we wanted for kids to walk through, like they always did. And it would have stayed mode, but they blocked it up. You had to fight and argue with them every time you want to go through there. That's all the trouble was, it was them, it wasn't the people. I'm not trying to be a troublemaker, an agitator. The facts are facts, I told you. By my, do you let your good Lord take me out?
Okay, if there's, uh, if there's no, if there's nothing further in the public comment, part of this hearing, we will now close, uh, the hearing to public comment. And, uh, I'll ask my fellow commissioners, if you guys have any, anything to say right now about this.
Well, probably if you get that one picture out here. If you notice, you got power lines going this way, and they also got them going this way. As far as I'm concerned, that's a easement for the power company that needs to stay open. But if you let them have it, they'll put buildings in there and stuff, and they can't get trucks in there to change poles out and take care of the service if something happens to it.
Okay. Do you guys have an opportunity to read these letters or read both of them? Well, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna put the county attorney on the spot here and ask you, what our options are in this, and whether we can or should make the final determination today, or whether we, whether it can be postponed, or what are the options in these matters? And I ask this not only for my, my own benefit, but so that everyone here understands what we can and cannot do in this matter.
Sure. Well, obviously, you could, you could vote to grant the vacation of the alley. Um, you could vote to deny and reject, object to the, the vacation of the alley. You could continue this, um, to, to the next meeting. Um, you could, at that point, reopen the public hearing, um, or leave the, leave the public hearing closed. Um, the, if you reopen the public hearing, that would allow everybody to speak again if, if necessary on, on, maybe you could limit it to new topics. Or you could leave it to where the public hearing is closed, because you have closed that, and, and just vote at a different time. And be able to, um, observe the, the property and those kind of things. So, if you can vote today, I guess, long story short, you can vote today, you, you don't have to. And as far as your decision, I think there's, um, I think that's up to you. I, I think there's valid legal reasons for either way. I still can support either way.
And whatever our, the board's decision would be, certainly would be subject to appeal in a court of law, right?
So, so, under this statute, it specifically outlines, um, the appellate process on this case. You can essentially, if, if we were to move to vacate the alley, we would have to do an ordinance. And once that ordinance is in place, um, anybody that objects has 30 days to petition either the Superior Court of this county or the Circuit Court of this county, and, um, have a hearing on this, um, issue.
Okay. Does everyone here understand that explanation from the county attorney? Thank you for simplifying matters.
If I did that.
Well, it's important that everyone understands what the rules are.
Sure.
Okay.
Got a question for Jay, if I can. Have you ever put stone on any one of these alleys? No maintenance stone?
Not recall, I've been down there since 1980.
Yeah.
They did in my time, they stoned all of them. I was there before that two houses were built, I lost the first house. And they did put stone in the alleys.
There hasn't been stone put in the back alley since they ran the sewer. And when they did the sewer on the back alley, north and south, they had put stone in there. Well, they put stone in there, but it's landscaping stone, no grid, no lawn. There's big question getting stuck out there. That was the last time any stone was put on.
North, south?
Yeah, it was just the north and south. There's never been anything done on it. Now, I've been there since 93. I remodeled that whole house when we did 94. There was nothing ever done on that, that other alley.
Excuse me. They died with service for him, and they did put stone in the alleys. And the fire department cleared, it was a fire. And you couldn't bargain.
You guys got anything else? Okay. You got any idea which direction you want to go on this?
I'd like to table it for, till the next meeting.
Okay. What do you think about that, Mark?
What's that?
Dale says he would like to table it for, till our next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Well. That is within our parameters?
As long as we make a motion to do so.
Okay.
I'll move a motion to table till next meeting.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion by Dale, second by Mark, to table the, the issue of the, uh, vacation of the alley request until our next meeting, which will be June 1st. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. Okay, um, the issue is tabled until our June 1st meeting. At that time, I hope we can resolve the matter one way or the other.
Just because I will be in Jamaica June 1st, so I don't know if you want to.
You have no business in Jamaica.
Well, I would be staying at Mr. Baddell's house, because he has a residence in Jamaica, but he didn't offer it up to me. So, we're staying somewhere else.
We'll make it to second meeting then.
Will you be back then?
I will. Hey, I don't know, guys.
Not all summer, is everything, I hope.
I'm redheaded and freckled, I don't bronze too well.
You ought to be ashamed of yourself.
I realize I probably shouldn't have said that on camera, though. I've got a whole bunch of family members and pit bulls and all kinds of animals guarding the house.
Okay. Would, uh, okay, in lieu of the fact that the county attorney will not be here June 1st, would you want to?
Yeah, move to the second meeting.
Okay. That will be, I don't have a calendar in front of me. That will be.
June 15th.
15?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I need a motion and a second to.
Move to amend this one, to move it to the 15th.
I'll second it.
Okay. Then I have a motion to, uh, amend the, the scheduling of our, uh, next meeting to take this matter up to June the 15th at 2:00 P.M. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, three ayes, Jane. So, it is now officially June 15th. We will take the matter up again, so.
So, is that just for you guys, or is that public hearing again?
It, it, that's, it, it is a, it'll be a public meeting.
Okay.
But it will not be a public, will it be an extension of our public hearing?
You closed the public hearing, um, I think it's arguable that you could open it again, but at this point, it would just be a public meeting. I know that sounds confusing, the distinction is a public meeting is essentially open to the public, but not necessarily open to anybody to speak unless permitted to. A public, um, hearing, you, you have the absolute right to speak, so I, at this point, I'm not sure. You closed the public hearing.
Well, I, I thought I was closing the.
Well, we just had a second.
The, the, the public comment.
You did, yeah.
Of the hearing, you know.
Right.
But if you say that closed everything.
No, it didn't close every, it just closed the public, allowing them to be able to speak unless you ask them questions or invite them to speak.
Okay.
You can always, at any public meeting, invite someone to speak, but they don't have the right to do so.
Okay. Well, I'm not going to tell anyone to sit down and shut up. Mr. Baddell?
Yes, I, uh, I've got a jury trial starting the 14th going through the 18th, so I will not be available now. If, if in fact, there's not going to be any further public input, and it's simply going to be the commissioners giving us their decision, then probably me being here isn't going to be totally necessary. But if, if there is going to be some argument as a part of your consideration, I kind of feel like I need to be here. So, I'm not quite sure what you've anticipated for the 15th. But I, I'm at a jury trial in Minneapolis for four days.
I, uh, I don't, I wouldn't anticipate your absence making a difference in the matter, truthfully.
We've closed the public hearing portion of it, um, and, and if there's, there's an issue after your, really, all that's left is your guys' discussion, your decision. Um, and, and once that happens, if attorneys get involved again, it can through the appellate process, if that makes sense.
Sure, yeah. Does that suit you?
What I'm hearing, then, my jury trial, I can go to that, and then I don't think that my here would make a difference or is necessary, so.
I think that's a fair assumption.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you.
Okay, well, a- as far as we're concerned today, that wraps up this matter for today. So, we'll hopefully render some sort of decision on June 15th. And anyone that, any interested party that has an interest in this matter can be here. But it, it will not be a public hearing, it will be a public meeting, but it will not be a public hearing, because the public hearing, the, the required public hearing process has taken place today. So, that is no longer required.
June 15th, 2:00?
Yes. Yes. Okay. We've got some other business to take care of, you folks are welcome to, to stay as long as you want, or, uh, leave if you like, but we'll be thankful to move on to, uh,
Thank you for having me.
To our regular business.
Thank you for having me.
Okay.
Thank you for having me. I'm not really a radical, I'm just, that's my reception.
Okay, our grant administrator, Joe Lisa Bates, is here for transit application approval.
Yes, it's that time of year again. Um, the Fayette County Transit is ready to submit their application for funding. What they are requesting this year, um, it'll be for the period of January 1st to December 31st of 2022. We are looking at a total project of $501,046. Um, taking away what we are projecting as far as passenger fares of $30,000. We're looking at a net project cost of $471,046. Um, what we will be applying for as far as federal and state is a total of $330,434. And what I need today, um, is we have a resolution that I need approved by the commissioners, and it is authorizing Dell Strong as the president of the commissioner to sign a lot of certifications and assurances. And also giving the Fayette Community Council on Aging and Aged, as they oversee the whole process, um, the authority to go ahead and to submit the application.
Okay, do you have the resolution?
Yes, Jane, yes. I went ahead and color-coded it of who needs to sign what. I put your name there too. Not, not over-coordinated or anything.
This is Resolution 21R3.
21R3. I'll move to pass Resolution 21R3.
Okay, we have a motion by Mark, second by Dale, to approve Resolution 21R3, the authorizing resolution for the application for the Fayette County Transit Authority's annual grant application. Any further question? All of us in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. And you, you want to hang around for this?
I can get him tomorrow, that'll be fine.
Okay.
The application is due Friday, so as long as I have it before then.
I don't know if we have any blue ink handy, it's noted here, you need blue ink on this.
Yes, I like my colors, I like it in blue, so I know it's the original.
Okay, I didn't know.
Sorry, that's maybe in particular.
Okay, I, no organ here. If you, if you will, now, is that all you had for us today?
Yes.
Okay, if you will, hang around, because Bruce Price is here.
Okay.
To talk about a, a grant application that we want you to be sure and hear.
Okay, I can do that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Jay, if you, if you don't mind me waiting a couple minutes, we want to let Bruce Price come up. Bruce, can you explain, uh, your need for a grant application approval?
My name's Bruce Price, I'm the president and the certified operator in charge of St. Jude's Village Water Association, and that's just behind Fayette Central School in Harrisburg. And I have been the operator there for 15, almost 20 years. And every three years, I have an inspection with IDIM, Indiana Department of Environmental Management. And for the last two inspections, so six years ago, three years ago, and now, I guess it'd be nine years, so, so beginning of the new inspection, they have found sufficient deficiencies in my water system. There's nothing wrong with the drinking water itself. The problem is, is chlorine alarms, just an old facility.
Needs updated.
It needs updated, it does. And there's 18 houses that's attached to that water system. And it could very well benefit other houses out through there had it be updated to the right standards. But in order for me to do that, since St. Jude's Village is within the county, Fayette County, I can't do anything grant-wise. I can't even initiate a grant without approval by the commissioners. So that is what I'm here today to try to, to get your guys' help. And I was kind of given to the understanding that Fayette County has got some grant money that can be used for water sewage and telecommunications. It would be awesome, is all I can say. Because we just got roped up by my field representative, Carol Chapel, and they're talking like $25,000 fines, up to a $500 a day penalty every day after that if I can't meet their criteria here before too much longer. So they've been pretty lame.
Okay, now the, the grant that you are considering, where does that come from?
Well, I had spoke with Ogra three years ago. And I had talked with our grant writer then...
Diana Wright.
Diane Wright. And Diane said there was nothing that the county could do to help me. Well, I was told by Ogra that the county is the only one that can help me with this because it's in the county. So right now, I'm in charge of the water system. I'm the operator in charge. I'm taking care of it. But I put together an emergency response plan that the state requires me to do once every five years, and they won't even accept my emergency response plan because of the deficiencies in the water system. So, which to me doesn't make a whole lot of sense. You still need an emergency response plan, even if you have deficiencies, so...
Okay, Jolissa, is there anything we can do to help Bruce out here as far as a grant application?
Well, what I want to do is meet with you to discuss the project a little bit more in detail. One of the things, if you're talking about Ogra, that's going to be required as an income survey. And so that will be something to take into consideration. That may be why she said that it didn't qualify. But that being said, there is some USDA funds and different things that we might be able to look into. I'd be happy to meet with you and...
That'd be great.
And go into some more.
So far, I've been roadblocks, so...
Yeah, but you would have to have permission from the commissioners in order to apply for a lot of your state's federal funds.
Okay. Okay, would it help if we, would it help the process if we went ahead and gave him permission to make application and then work with you on that?
Well, we'll have to do an application for each individual funder. And usually, they require that we come and have a resolution passed. So just, we need to probably talk as soon as possible. And then, as that process goes on, we'll have to come up for you for that specific funder.
Okay.
Then let us do like a general, you know, you have to go ahead.
Can this all be done before our next meeting?
We will see what we can do.
The next one or the one after that?
Whether he has to be here or not.
Yeah, we don't need to make a work.
Is that clear things up for you?
Yeah, and there's also, there's a pressure sewer main that runs out 300 north. The one time I was told that belonged to, it belongs to the school corporation. And it would, I don't know what we would have to do to be added on to that line. But I, that would be great if we could get onto the sewage system, too.
Yeah, it would be. I remember when that was installed, but I don't know who claims ownership to it right now.
Right. Maybe we can figure that out and talk about who does and what we can do.
Okay, well, you, you and Jolissa come back when you have something that, that we actually can apply for, and we'll take care of it for you.
Okay, all right. Thanks, everybody.
Good luck. Okay, Highway Department, Jay Havlin is here to close out the 2020 Community Crossings project.
Bear with me, because this is the first time I've done this.
Well, it's only about six months later.
Only?
Yeah.
That's the wrong one.
Our 2020 project this year really didn't get completed until April 8th. So that's one reason we're just not getting this stuff together.
Okay, I've got it all here. It's got it all tagged where you need to sign it and everything. Everything's been completed out there. I went around and checked everything. And I went over this with Jane, because I, like I said, I've never done one before.
Okay. Require one signature or three?
Just one.
Okay.
I have a motion for you to sign that.
You don't have to do anything without the immigrant's agreement.
Oh, that's right. Well, we'll wait till Mark gets back. Wait till Mark gets back. Okay, now you want to give us a motion?
I move a motion to allow Dale to sign the closeout.
I'll second it.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second to approve the closeout of the 2020 Community Crossings project. Sign all necessary paperwork. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, okay. We will...
Sign afterwards. Does your sign have a wrong spot?
Wait a minute, here's one.
Right.
There, that's where it started.
We're just signing. We need to go over some other stuff.
Okay. All right.
Sorry.
Because that has to stay with you.
Yeah, but I want to make sure you sign the rights cards, too.
All right, I didn't, I didn't know if this had to go back with you.
Oh, no, no.
Okay, it's going to stay with her. That's okay.
Do you want me to go ahead with what else I have here?
Go right ahead.
Okay, when we signed the paperwork for the two pieces of equipment we bought?
Yep.
What they sent us wasn't complete paperwork. It had, when they had copied it, it skipped some lines, so we have to re-sign it.
Okay.
Have to keep you stopped in this morning to give it to our, during meeting, excuse me. He's got it all tagged. He can give me complete new papers, Jane.
Okay. And there's going to be some things I need to fill out then.
Mm-hmm.
There's going to be some things I need to fill out then on this.
Yes.
Okay, so down that can wait till afterwards, too.
Okay, this is just to do, do again what we'd already done?
Yeah, because the paper he sent, I'd be denied it because it didn't have all the paperwork on it.
Okay. You need anything like reauthorization on this, Jane? All right, we'll just add it to the stack over here then. Okay, do you have anything else, Jane?
You sure you want to add this?
Well, I hear about it one way or the other, so you might as well go ahead and...
I've been looking for, to replace the forklift for down at Highway Garage.
Why am I not surprised?
Well, I got the money for this. You don't have to worry about it.
He's on a roll.
I get it, truthfully, too. That's, that's what he's asking for. But we've already been up to talk to him and checked it out and everything. It's an older machine, but it'd be handy for down there where we don't have to take our backhoe apart every time we need a forklift.
You tell me, you gotta use the backhoe for a forklift.
Well, we used to use the old one we used to pull the oil with. But when they blowed it up, they lost the forklift.
47-inch forks?
Yes. It's in pretty good shape for its age.
How old is it?
It's an '87.
How bad do you need it?
Well, we could use it.
I didn't want to ask you how bad you need it.
You're getting the bucket, right?
Yeah, I could get the fork stripped, and then if I got it out on the road, I got to do the same thing. I'd bring it back and use it in the garage. This will stay at the garage.
This stays at the garage.
Yeah.
Can't morsel move?
I'll tell you, you said that.
Don't tell him, don't tell him, man. Heavy duty.
What would you plan on paying for this?
All my equipment fund. I got it in my fund.
You got the money.
$118,000 in there yet. I was keeping part of it back for that distributor truck in case it comes out a very big bill.
And we don't have the distributor truck back yet?
Not yet. He said they spoke to let us know today about the tank. They're still waiting on the tank from Ettnair.
Is, is that, is that his cheapest price on that?
No, no, we can get him down on it. Just sitting up here talking to him, we got him down $1,000. I think we can get him farther than that.
Well, then we shouldn't show our hand before he does shows his.
Yeah, I just want to know, make sure it's all right for me to go up and do more talking on it. I know what Mark tells me. It's easier to apologize than...
If you need it, you need it. It's hard, it's true.
But I wanted you to know what I was doing. I didn't want you to think I was sneaking around doing it.
Well, when you, when you think you wore him down as far as you can, come back and let us know what he says, and that can season in, I guess.
Should I just call Mark?
Well, I hope he don't get you in trouble.
It won't be the first time I've been in trouble. Let me see if I got anything else in here.
You ain't got nothing about the hoop doing it, do you?
No, I'm still, still researching that. That's what I wanted to talk to Jolissa about before she left. That's it, that's all I got.
Okay.
We've been, we've been getting the road, trying to get what roads we're going to have paved through the Community Crossings, try to get them ready for the paving, get ours ready for paving. If we don't have a distributor truck, we'll go out and start paving. That's all we can do.
We, you, you can't do any chip seal until the...
The truck gets back, yeah. We've got no way to spray it.
So the only thing you can do is hot mix.
Yep, with spray patching. We're using oil for spray patching, but you can't do a whole road with a spray patch.
Takes forever.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I guess, I can't recall, I don't have your, your annual plan in front of me. How many miles were you planning on?
We were planning on doing 30 of hot mix and 30 of chip seal.
30 miles of hot mix?
Yep.
Yeah, that's pretty good.
And we got some chip seal. We're going to, we're going to catch up to the last year we didn't do. So it'd actually be a little more chip seal. Because that just depends on distributor truck getting back.
Yeah.
If we have to do them all with hot mix, we'll do them all with hot mix.
Yeah, okay.
We won't get as many miles, but we get a lot better roads.
Yeah, that's for sure. Okay, you guys have anything else for Jane? Come back and see us again. Is there anyone else back there? Okay. Heather Caldwell is here from the Extension Office.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
All right. I don't need anything. Just wanted to give you guys an update. It's been a couple months since I've been able to get here, so I'm very excited to let you guys know that for our 4H enrollment this year, we fit 530 youth. I'm looking to confirm the last two years' enrollments to let you know a percentage increase that we've had, but it's been a long time, I believe, since we've had even over 500. So we're really excited about that. Now we're able to do more mini 4H day camps. We're doing 4H camp the beginning of June. So I think that has helped get the excitement level up for 4H in general. So hopefully COVID continues to go behind us, so we can get these activities rolling. I think that's really a big, big push. I appreciate you guys' support. You guys have always been very supportive of our 4H program, and I appreciate that very much. Jane's been a great help with a lot of things as well, so thank you for your support as well. Animal entries had to be entered by midnight last night for those that want to show at county and state fair. That went pretty well. We spent most of the day yesterday just making phone calls, reminding people to sign up, making sure everybody was done. That really went successfully. That's the first time that we've been able to do that with the fair going virtual. Last year, it was a little different with the 4H program, excuse me. So that went really well last night. And then just a few programs we've done, since I haven't been here a couple months, I wanted to give you an update on a couple programs we did. I was able to finish a program called Annie's Project, and that's an agriculture program designed for women, just with a comfortable, relaxed environment. Talk about grain marketing, succession planning, banking, financial documents, drones, ag tourism, if somebody's interested in that. It was a six-week program that ended at the end of March. We had 11 women from four counties that came, so I thought that was pretty, pretty decent attendance. We had, I was able to do an introduction to electricity class for homeschool co-op that covers Fayette, Henry, Wade counties. 20 youth got a six-week course on introduction to electricity, and they were able to build the circuit boards that the first-year 4H members build that are displayed at the fair. I was able to get funding through Whitewater Valley RMC and Henry County RMC. They sponsored the money to get the circuit boards so that those kids could build the circuit boards. I think it was a great, a great success. Those kids had a great time. As I mentioned, we have 4H camp coming up. We have seven youth signed up for camp. I'm super excited about that. It's been several years since we've had representation of youth at this 4H camp. We also have one counselor. You may have seen the newspaper articles where Tractor Supply, through their Paper Clover campaign that they have in the fall and the summer that's to raise money for 4H leadership opportunities for the youth in our county. Through those funds that we received in the fall, we were able to cover the cost of our 4H counselor. It's $125 for the counselor to go and attend this. It's also $125 for the youth to attend. So through the Paper Clovers, we were able to cover the cost of the counselor. Rhonda's been doing an art club for several months. Each week, they do a different project, every other week, I believe. So they've done like, they've done painting, they made Christmas ornaments, they're making, they made Mother's Day gifts. So she's been working with Whitewater Valley Arts Association with different artists through there. So that's been a very successful partnership for us, working with them. And the Extension Kitchen, Rhonda did four episodes, different recipes, and then she was able to talk about health and health and human science part of her journey. Part of her job was the focus of those different episodes. Those are starting to go out now, um, on the Channel Three YouTube channel. And she's also just started outdoor classroom at The Oasis, so, uh, The Oasis has been a a great partner with us since the day we started. Being able to do outdoor programs out there, that was very beneficial for us during COVID. We were able to be outside. We had a lot of success with that, and we're hoping to have the same success even better hopefully this year. And then, last but not least, Cassidy Crom, our summer intern from last summer, is coming back again this summer. We're real excited to have her again. She started yesterday. So we're off and running. We're getting things ready for the fair, getting ready for a good, successful 4H program, so just wanted to give you guys an update. Do you guys have any questions or comments?
Well, that was a very encouraging report. You didn't even look at notes.
I didn't.
You had all that in your head.
Stayed up all night to learn that.
I stayed up late last night, memorizing it. Get the numbers in.
Most people would not know that you were that busy in the Extension Office with 4H, and it's, that's very encouraging. Uh, that's a good report.
Good, good.
Five hundred, a five hundred and thirty enrollment in 4H, that's, that sounds to me like a big number.
It's pretty amazing, and I wanted to confirm the numbers. I didn't get that from the state office. I ran a report, but it was, we have a new system this year that's much better, I think. The old system, I don't trust the reports in that yet, so I've asked the state office to send me the reports, and I'll give you guys a percent increase or the numbers that, um, was from last year to this year, just so we've got solid numbers. I didn't want to kind of shoot a dart out there. I wanted to make sure we, we had solid numbers for you, so. I'll shoot you an email hopefully this week and we'll be able to give you numbers for sure. But I'm excited. I think that number's pretty great.
Just for curiosity,
Yeah.
are you doing anything special for the seventeen-year cicada this year?
You know, I, I've only shared a couple of webinars on our Facebook page, but I personally am not doing anything special, but I should have. Where it's come, anytime, anytime, we'll be all getting, uh, ringing in our ears, so we'll be ready.
Within a week, I think they expect, you know, you know, they have some, they say some pretty good recipes for those things.
See, I would try it. I would do it. I'm willing to try anything. I've eaten worms before, mealworms, I'll, crickets, I'll do, I'll try some cicadas.
Let's tell us how they do that.
I'll bring, maybe the next meeting, I'll bring you guys some snacks. Snacks at the next meeting, guys, come on in.
Make, make mine chocolate, come on in.
Deal, I'll do it.
Just make mine chocolate.
With no cicadas?
Put a little sweet baby raisin on it, then you can eat it.
There you go. You can get a variety pack, that's what we'll do. A little ranch on one. We'll have, we'll do it. Be sure to bring enough for the guys. Definitely, definitely.
Okay, did you have anything else Heather?
That's all I've got. Thanks you guys, as always, for your support.
You guys got anything for Heather?
Not a full...
Thank, thank you for the encouraging report.
Very good, you're welcome.
Okay. Okay, um... Is there, uh, anybody have any mail you need to share? Do you have anything under old business you want to share?
Trying to remind them about DLC. Remind them about...
Yeah, yeah, okay, thanks for that Jane. Just to remind you guys, four-thirty tomorrow evening, we've got that, uh, presentation from DLC. And, uh, and our new business, you guys have anything under new business?
I've got something, maybe. I was talking to Jane about this. We're getting, how much did you say that money was, two million something?
Two, two point two four.
And that's coming from who?
The American Rescue Plan?
Is there any way we could have our lawyer ask if we could use that money to build a, a, uh, recall, thanks? Work release thing?
We, we, we could ask him, I don't know what he would say. I think there's been some new guidance come out in, in recent days. I haven't had a chance to read it yet. Have you looked at any of that Jane? Neither have I. So, you know, any, we, eventually, we have to sit down and, and put together a plan.
Well, I was thinking, if they want us to squander that money, why not put it to good use?
Yeah, well, I want to see it used for, uh, a good use, that's for sure. So... But anyhow, what was your question for the county attorney?
If he could write a letter asking that we could use that money for the, uh, work release for women.
Oh, I don't know if he could or not.
Write a letter to him?
Whoever's giving us that money. Two million something.
We can find out, yeah, we can find out. As long as you're, as long as you're clever with your, your word.
Well, that's why we got you. You can write it to Jamaica if you want.
Jail population probably could play a role into that, lack of social distancing and that kind of thing, so.
There's a lot of things to consider, for sure.
But if, you know, you don't get nowhere if you don't ask, so.
Okay. Well... You look into it?
I'll look into that and see what I can find out as far as answers to that.
Okay. All right, you guys have anything else under new business? If one thing I'll mention here, um... I've been asked by, uh, one of the members of the Tourism Board about the kiosk that we have out here on the, in the lawn. And evidently, there's, Parks Department thinks that they could use it on a trail. And then there's, there's also a, another organization linked with the, a, a new membership in the Botwater, Botwater Valley Canal Byway Association, which is a, and it's become a, it's part of a national organization now, say that they could use the kiosk for brochures pertaining to the canal byway. The Tourism Board was asking me if we would allow the thing to be removed and moved to an, an location for a city park. And if we do that, probably the canal group is gonna want another one back to take its place, so, um... If, if we've got two groups both interested in using it, I, I don't know if they would tear it up trying to move it or not. So I guess, uh, I'll, I'll mention this. After the meeting, go outside and take a look at this thing. We don't have to make a decision right now. Take a look at that thing and see if you want to leave it where it's at, or allow it to be moved if it can be moved. And any other detail comes up about it, I'll share it with you. Okay? But I don't, I don't think you, you don't really have to do anything right now. Okay, um, that's all I have under new business. Jane, or what are we forgetting today? We, we always forget something. Or I do. Um, do we have any patron concerns? Anyone? Okay, Derek Cowell's there. Derek, do you have anything for us?
Nope.
Okay.
Just curious.
All right.
I'll meet you, uh, approve claims and payroll.
Say.
Okay, we have a motion by Mark Deckenbadel to approve, uh, claims and payroll. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. All right, we will start in. I'll pass to, uh...
This, this page does need all three, so I have it aligned.
Okay. Okay.
And then the other two just need you.
Okay. We even got blue ink?
Yeah.
Okay. We've got all of here, guys, from the, uh... From the, uh, twenty-twenty Community Crosses takes all three of us to sign, so... Sign that one and keep all that, that group there together. Now, does any of this take all three signatures?
That is only you.
Okay.
These take all three.
Yeah. I'll save this one to the last, and then, don't lose that blue pen. These go to Jolisa also, or not?
Um, yes, those go to Jolisa.
We do a sign of the page?
Just use the red. She color-coded it.
Now, wait a minute. I don't think so. And the green and yellow?
Green is David, David Link from Transit, and yellow is Jeff.
Okay. Dave and I and Jeff are all on the same page on this one.
Yeah.
Right? Okay.
I signed my name faster than you do, Dale.
Well, you're used to it.
That's a very technical signature, I have.
I noticed that. I, if somebody showed me that, I don't know if I could make out what it was. You write like a doctor.
You mean you can't read?
There you go. Anything else?
I think so.
Any everything?
I think so.
I'll meet you adjourned.
Second. Okay, a motion by Mark Deckenbadel to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, we're adjourned. Thank you all very much.